The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was a matter to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notices of and to attend the meeting to the public bodies at which business affecting their interests is discussed for a great time. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan every preschools district or educational advocacy meeting on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the Asbury Park Press and Historic. These notices presented to municipal parks of the borough Madawan, the town of Aberdeen, and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. These notices were also placed in the board's website. Please stand for the closing.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, on the nation under God, indivisible, and created in a great and just system.
Ms. Spohley gets here and everybody else. Ms. Rutter, Ms. Martin, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Morgan.
Here. If we solve the closed session, we will be for the purpose of discussing privacy and personal matters and legal advice. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for not admitting to how things society. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be thirty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with this action will take place. I am motion and second.
I'll vote ten.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to get started. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's a very special night to get to honor our governors, educators, and education professionals of the year. We'll be getting to that in just one second. I just want to have a motion and a second to approve the correspondence to the board.
All right.
Thank you. Superintendent Perez.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rawls again. Congratulations to our staff. Very proud of you. Thank you for all you do and the dedication you provide to our students. Dr. Rawls?
Thank you, Superintendent Perez. It is with great excitement that we get a chance to recognize our special educators tonight. I'm not going to talk much to you. I'm going to let the principals who work closely with these amazing educators speak more about their accomplishments. We're going to start off with Cambridge Park, and we're going to have Mrs. Maggie Blazer come up and introduce our educators of the year.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm going to ask Audra. Is she here? I know I was standing up in front of people, so. Audra came to Cambridge Park two years ago. When she interviewed with me, I knew immediately after talking to her for probably two minutes that we needed to hire her at Cambridge Park. She had a science background, a strong science background. She's taught special education. She's taught many grades. She creates hands-on, engaging, thought-provoking lessons to our students. We have preschool students that know all about the scientific process. They use words and vocabulary that I would equate to high schoolers using, which is pretty amazing. She's worked with our middle school staff and our high school staff to bring students over and do lessons with them. She's received grants. She keeps our garden tended, and when I say tended, she grows the plants.
You all see it.
Thank you. Harvest the plants. She does lessons with students. For example, today I walked into her classroom, and her students were all trying mint leaves that they grew and they picked themselves, and they were describing them. Their faces were all sprung up because they did not like it, and then they tried radishes that they grew. So, Audra, you've been a wonderful addition to the staff at Cambridge Park. Our students have gained so much from your knowledge, and I want to congratulate you. This is a well-deserved award. In her free time, she spends it with her husband and her two children. Are they here? They're not here. So, congratulations. Next, I'm going to call up Lexi Johnson, who's our school parent. So, we often talk about the power of social media. About five years ago, we were very desperate for a school nurse. We had interviewed several people, and no one felt like just the right fit. So, on my personal Facebook page, I said, "Does anybody know a school nurse?" That was all I did. And it turns out that one of my retired guidance counselors said, "Hey, my daughter, her friend is looking for a school nurse job." And Lexi came in, and just like with Audra, I knew immediately after talking to her for thirty seconds that she was going to be the perfect fit for our building. Lexi's job differs a little bit from other nurses in our district because she works with students, parents, and families who often, this is their first experience in a school district. So, many of these parents have only gone through daycare, so they're leaving their children for the first time in somebody else's hands. So, Lexi has three hundred students there? Approximately. She works with Lightbridge as well. She does hearing vision and dental screenings for all of them. She takes care of immunization compliance. She does medication administration. She monitors our medically fragile students. She's a part of ECAP, HRT, and CST, which is a lot of acronyms. If you don't know what they are, it's okay. And she expertly navigates working with parents, staff, and students, and laughs the whole time while doing it. It makes our students laugh. It's very hard working with three, four-year-olds, many of whom don't have the language to share what's wrong and why they're in pain or what they need. So, in Lexi's free time, she spends it with her husband Chris and her two children, who are right here. And I'm very honored to be able to give you this award because I know, just like Audra, you are part of Cambridge Park. So, congratulations.
Ms. Luda, Ms. Johnson, if you can stay up here. We have awards for you. I apologize if they were behind you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm so excited to be here, and congratulations to everybody. Such a great night honoring all of you. So, I have the honor of acknowledging two teachers at our school, but I need a little help from our friends. So, any of Miss Gilbert's students, if you can come up for me, Miss Tara's class?
I'm ready.
Governors Educator of the Year, the one and only Mrs. Michelle Gilbert. Please come up. Michelle has been a cherished part of the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District for the past four years, and every one of those years has been spent right here at Cliffwood School, where she works side by side with our wonderful teaching partner, Miss Tara. Let's give her a round of applause. Together, we are a dynamic duo full of energy, passion, and love for their students. Whether singing songs, dancing around the classroom, too much sometimes, never too much, creating magical moments for their pre-K learners, they make Cliffwood a joyful place to be. Before joining our district, Michelle brought with her over two decades of experience from a private school in Brent, where she laid the foundation for what would become a truly impactful career. Her expertise, dedication, and nurturing spirit are evident in everything she does. Michelle's experience in early childhood education has also been recognized beyond our school walls. She was named Tools of the Mind Pre-K Twitter Teacher for the months of February and March in 2024 and again in January 2025. Let's give everybody a round of applause. Michelle is an active and valued member of our school community. She serves on both the Title One Committee and the Student Climate Equity Committee, always advocating for what's best for our students and families. She's instrumental in organizing our Title One Family Nights and contributes greatly to our cause program, which celebrates positive behavior and school spirit. You guys are doing great. Michelle also participates in just about every school event and always with a smile, whether she's cheering on her team at the Battle of the Faculties for taking on the Harlem Wizards in the Spirit basketball game. Michelle brings enthusiasm, laughter, and heart to all she does. Her dedication doesn't stop at the end of the school day. She is always lending a hand, supporting her colleagues, and helping to make Cliffwood a warm and welcoming place for all. But perhaps the most beautiful testimony to Michelle's impact comes from her students themselves. Miss Gilbert has heart, and he's a girl, and I love to play with her. Say, "Good evening." Zara shared, "I love to sing the Caterpillar song with Mrs. Gilbert," and Melanie being, as she said, "I love to play Duck, Duck, Goose with Mrs. Gilbert." Do you guys like to play Duck, Duck, Goose?
Yeah.
Michelle is kind. She is passionate. She is full of energy and joy. And above all, she's an extraordinary educator who touches the lives of her students in the most meaningful way. Tonight, we are also thrilled to welcome two very special guests who are here to celebrate this well-deserved honor. Michelle's husband, Andy, and her father, Donald, and his children. You are so lucky that I just have your family. Your light shines brightly, and your impact is felt by everyone who has the pleasure of working with you. We are Cliffwood proud. Congratulations. Well more. Tonight, we are thrilled to celebrate a truly remarkable member of our Cliffwood family. Please join me in congratulating our Governors Educational Service Professional of the Year for the 2024-2025 school year, Miss Tara McCormick. Let's give her a round of applause. Tara is the kind of person whose energy lights up a room, or in our case, the entire school. She is truly a dancing machine, always full of energy, joy, positivity. Whether it's greeting students at the bus duty in the morning or sending them home with smiles in the afternoon, you can count on Tara to be dancing her heart out the whole way. Her moves are no joke, and her joy is convenient. Every day, she shows up with a big smile, a kind heart, and a warm, welcoming presence. Tara is incredibly caring, not just to her pre-K students, but to all the students and staff at Cliffwood. She makes every person feel seen, valued, and loved, and it's that spirit, that vibrant, joyful energy that makes Tara so special. Tara is a fixture at every school event. She has also played in the basketball game against the Harlem Wizards and showed her team's spirit at the Battle of the Faculties. Wherever Cliffwood is, Tara is there cheering, dancing, and spreading sunshine. Tara's journey in our district began in 2017, when she started as a long-term substitute at Cambridge Park. When the district secured the preschool grant, Tara officially joined us as a district preschool staff member. Then, in the 2021-2022 school year, she became part of something very special, the inaugural preschool expansion at Cliffwood, working alongside Mrs. Gilbert to build something extraordinary and what Cliffwood may think. We are lucky to have Miss Tara as part of the Cliffwood family. Her dedication, her joy, and her love for our students make her irreplaceable. And if you don't believe us, just listen to some of her students. Carly says, "Miss Tara gives the best hugs, and I like to play candyland with her." Michaela adds, "I love to give Miss Tara hugs, and I love to wear the plants with her." No simple words say it all. Tara is someone who makes kids feel safe, loved, and excited to learn and grow. And finally, we are delighted to welcome her wonderful family here tonight, her husband, Mike, and their children Connor and Jaden. We'd like them, and we look like them, up here, please, along with Miss Gilbert, also, Miss Tara, and their amazing pre-K class, and spread some sunshine right here and now by dancing together, so walking on sunshine. I have to do it. I have to. Sorry.
Dr. Cronin, I hope you're ready to dance. We're in Reebok Drive School. Thank you, Dr. Rawls. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our recipients. Ms. Paple, will you join us?
Ms. Paple is our Reebok Drive Elementary School Educator of the Year. Ms. Paple embodies the heart and soul of what makes a team so fire. Welcome towards Ms. Paple's classroom. The first thing you'll see is a sign that says, "I'm so glad you're here." As soon as you step into Ms. Paple's third-grade classroom, the first thing you notice is a film of warmth, a film of warmth that comes from the way that each of Ms. Paple's students genuinely wants to be in her classroom. As you look around the classroom, you will first see family pictures and affirmation station, a full-size mirror of positive sayings ordering now. This environment is driven by Ms. Paple's desire to encourage her students to be the best version of themselves daily, and this all starts with knowing that her students are respected and loved. Ms. Paple is the essence of a warmth commander, pushing students to continue to grow while supporting them in every step. Ms. Paple's ability to respond to the social, emotional, and academic needs of her students nothing short of inspiring. Conferencing with students daily, as soon as a student is in need, Ms. Paple is already there, present and attuned, with a listening ear and an actionable solution. One of my favorite parts of the morning is watching her students kick off the day with the beloved rain bits. Just one brief example of an activity that reflects Ms. Paple's dedication to human autonomy and her belief in creating a welcoming community. Ms. Paple is a true collaborator. As the teacher of our third-grade multilingual learners, Ms. Paple walks the plans with the MLL teacher and our counselor to ensure every student is receiving what they need. Ms. Paple models lifelong learning. Becoming a literacy specialist last year, Ms. Paple immediately provided professional development, earning great reviews from her colleagues. In her six-year Reebok Drive, Ms. Paple has transitioned into the role of a veteran teacher on the table. In this position, Ms. Paple plays a crucial role in making instructional decisions and planning for its events for our students' transition over the Lloyd Road. As a member of the school improvement committee, Ms. Paple has developed a database of resources for teachers of all grade levels to use to support their learning both in math and reading. Ms. Paple feels every week she answers with kindness, always lifting up others in need by example. Ms. Paple, your dedication to your students, colleagues in our entire school, Ms. Paple shortens her shorter. Thank you for being in the classroom, where our students feel safe, respected, and loved. We are thrilled to see what the future holds for you and all of your students. Ms. Paple is joined tonight by Mr. and Mrs. Paple, Ms. Paple's two sisters, and her fiance, Mr. Barla. Congratulations to Andrew Paple. And for getting married next Saturday. You're in Reebok Drive Elementary School Educational Service Specialist of the Year, Mrs. Plumbow. Mrs. Plumbow could not be here with us tonight as it is her father's seventeenth birthday. It is my absolute pleasure to take a moment to recognize someone who is truly the heartbeat of Reebok Drive Elementary School, a person whose compassion, leadership, and dedication shine in every corner of our building. Mrs. Plumbow wears many hats, and she wears them all with grace, intention, and deep commitment to every child and adult who walks through our doors. Whether teaching monthly character trade lessons in every classroom, coordinating building-wide behavior supports, or working directly with families to ensure their child's success, Mrs. Plumbow's work is rooted in empathy, strategy, and unwavering care. Each month, her character lessons align seamlessly with our school-wide focus on positive behavior and development. These aren't just lessons. They are moments of connection, reflection, and inspiration for our students. What makes Mrs. Plumbow truly exceptional is her ability to know each student, not just their names, but their needs, their background stories, and their strengths. Building trust and relationships with our students and their families, tailoring her support so that every student has what they need to thrive, Mrs. Plumbow's door is always open, her energy is always warm, and her presence is always supportive. Mrs. Plumbow is a powerful advocate, connected with families with services and supports, and make a real difference in the lives of our students. Her impact is felt not just in the classrooms, but in the homes and hearts of so many. If you ever started your day over Reebok Drive with a smile, chances are it was because of Mrs. Plumbow's morning announcements, complete with uplifting songs similar to what Ms. Charant should share with us, and messages that brighten the mood and set a positive tone for everyone in the building. From spirit weeks to theme days to school-wide celebrations, Mrs. Plumbow brings creativity and joy into our daily routines, reminding us all of the importance of fun, connection, and community. Mrs. Plumbow is in the trust and respect of students, staff, and families alike, not because of any one thing she does, but because of how she does it, with kindness, thoughtfulness, and heart. Students seek her guidance, staff seek her wisdom, and families rely on her support. Mrs. Plumbow's role at Reebok Drive can't be overstated, making our school a better place and a brighter place, a true champion for our children, a trusted colleague, and a pillar of our community. Everyone, please give one more round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Cronin. Next, we have Mrs. Kelly from Scrapport.
Good evening. I have the pleasure tonight of speaking about the Stratford staff completed this year. I would like to start off by saying, when I met with my staff to discuss this evening, they both cringed and said, "Do I have to speak?" And I said, "No." And then they both suffered. They said, "Please keep it brief." So, I would like to invite up Mrs. Colleen Burden. I myself have only been at Stratford for a few short months, so I haven't had the opportunity to work with Colleen in very long, but I have to say, in that short time, I am very much in awe of Mrs. Burden. She walks around the halls as if nothing really bothers her. I'll use the elementary term, "cool as a cucumber," because I just sometimes want to meet her. She definitely brings a sense of calm to kindergarten, if that's possible. I do have a few remarks. Mrs. Burden is a dedicated kindergarten teacher, currently, you won't believe this, in her thirtieth year of teaching. Even more impressive is the last twenty-four of those years have been spent here in Madawan at our very own Stratford Elementary School. She has made in her life's work to guide our youngest learners through their very first school experiences, and she does so with a passion and patience that are truly inspiring. Colleen is especially passionate about helping her students learn how to read and build the foundations that will carry them through their entire educational journey. Her classroom is a place filled with curiosity, joy, laughter, and a lot of learning. A self-proclaimed city girl from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Colleen now enjoys the peaceful pace of what she calls "country living" all the way out in Millstone, New Jersey. She and her husband Jim have two wonderful children, Court and Rat, which she speaks often of and very fondly of. As a family, they love traveling together, especially to places like Van, Canada, which happens to be her favorite destination so far. If you haven't seen it, look up the pictures. They're amazing. Colleen also enjoys relaxing at the beach, I'm sure, with a book in hand, and going on bike rides with her family. But if you really want to know what makes Mrs. Burden special, just ask her students. These are some direct quotes. They'll tell you she is kind, patient, thoughtful, and funny. She's amazing at cutting paper, great at teaching math, and helps us read books. She always reminds them, "Keep your hands to yourself." And perhaps most importantly, they say, "She is the best teacher in the world." Congratulations, Mrs. Burden, and thank you for the incredible impact you've made, not only in your classroom, but on the lives of so many children and families over the years. We are also lucky to have you.
I have Mrs. Fry. I have the privilege this evening to recognize this year's Governors Educational Services Professional of the Year for Stratford Elementary School, is Christine Fry. While I have only been at Stratford a few short months, I have had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Fry in other capacities in her time here in the district. She's amazing, and I get her because I am also a social worker, so I definitely think we're on the same page a lot of the time. It's my pleasure to stand here and speak about you this evening. Mrs. Fry is currently completing her sixth year in the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District. Even more impressive is the last 24 of those years have been spent here in Madawan at our very own Scrapmore Elementary School. She has made in her life's work to guide our youngest learners through their very first school experiences, and she does so with a passion and patience that are truly inspiring. Colleen is especially passionate about helping her students learn how to read and build the foundations that will carry them through their entire educational journey. Her classroom is a place filled with curiosity, joy, laughter, and a lot of learning. A self-proclaimed city girl from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Colleen now enjoys the peaceful pace of what she calls "country living," all the way out in Millstone, New Jersey. She and her husband Jim have two wonderful children, Court and Rad, which she speaks often of and very fondly of. As a family, they love traveling together, especially to places like Banff, Canada, which happens to be her favorite destination so far. If you haven't seen it, look up the pictures, they're amazing. Colleen also enjoys relaxing at the beach, I'm sure, with a book in hand, and going on bike rides with her family. But if you really want to know what makes Mrs. Burden special, just ask her students. These are some direct quotes. They'll tell you she is kind, patient, thoughtful, and funny. She's amazing at cutting paper, great at teaching math, and helps us read books. She always reminds them, "Keep your hands to yourself." And perhaps most importantly, they say, "She is the best teacher in the world." Congratulations, Mrs. Burden, and thank you for the incredible impact you've made, not only in your classroom, but on the lives of so many children and families over the years. We are all so lucky to have you. I'm privileged this evening to recognize this year's Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year for Scrapmore Elementary School, is Christine Fry. While I have only been at Scrapmore a few short months, I have had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Fry in other capacities in her time here in the district. She's amazing, and I get her because I am also a social worker, so I definitely think we're on the same page a lot of the time. It's my pleasure to stand here and speak about you this evening. Mrs. Fry is currently completing her sixth year in the Madawan Evergreen Regional School District, where she serves as a dedicated school social worker on the child setting team. She brings an extraordinary level of compassion, energy, and commitment to her role, advocating fiercely for our most vulnerable students. Whether it's supporting families, guiding students through challenges, or offering a listening ear to a colleague, Christine is always there, committed, loyal, and reliable. But Christine's impact doesn't stop with students. She's also a trusted, loyal colleague, someone others turn to in times of challenge or in cheer. Her investment in relationships runs deep, and her presence on any team makes it stronger. A graduate of Monmouth University and a proud former member of their women's soccer team, Christine hasn't strayed far from the field. She continues to share her love of the game as a coach, a parent, and a lifelong athlete. A self-described homebody, she does like to indulge in concerts with family and friends, and in fact, she gave up tickets for a performance tonight in order to be here. As a Madawan resident, Christine and her husband of 22 years, Dave, have raised four wonderful children in this community. All four, sorry, all four children, by the way, were students of our previous recipient, Mrs. Burden. Christine is not only a trusted professional, but a true neighbor, always building connections and lifting others wherever she goes. Christine Fry represents the very best of what it means to serve in education, and we are so grateful for her.
Next we have Dr. Poppy Deere.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor tonight to introduce our Governor's Educator of the Year, our Teacher of the Year for Lloyd Road, Miss Emily Mills. Miss Mills has been a staff member at Lloyd Road in Madawan for the last six years, and an exemplary educator and a true team player who supports our Lloyd Road school students, staff, and parents. Miss Mills is a kind, compassionate, resourceful, and empathetic and lifelong educator who truly exemplifies dedication and caring. She is constantly seeking out ways to enhance her teaching and support her students. She has been a leader in the implementation of her store of circles and makes a daily effort to get to know each of her students on a personal level, including their cultures, their interests, their hobbies, as well as their academic and emotional needs. Miss Mills is deeply involved in our school community, always willing to do whatever she can to support our students at our school. She has volunteered for countless events, school activities, including our school spelling bee for the last two years, our school climate committee, our school skip committee, PTO events, the Harlem Wizards game, lip sync, sunshine, staff versus student volleyball games, battle of the schools, just the name of the game. Emily is viewed as a leader in the area of curriculum and instruction among her colleagues and is extremely tech savvy, offering support to others whenever she can. Emily creates a meaningful and lasting connection with her students and inspires them to strive for their goals and enjoys positive, supportive, and meaningful relationships with all the students and staff that she encounters. We are so privileged to have you at Lloyd Road. I know Miss Mills is here tonight with her family, so honored to meet everyone and her family, and once again, I wish you congratulations. Mrs. Gonzalez has been a staff member of Lloyd Road for the last four years and an asset to our school and our school community. Mrs. Gonzalez greets all students and staff with a big smile every morning, and no matter what type of day you're having, you just have to walk in, see Mrs. Gonzalez, and just the smile on her face makes you feel better. She is always willing to do whatever she can to support our school and our students and ensure they have a successful day. On any given day, you can find Mrs. Gonzalez lending a helping hand to the staff when she is not working with our students or asking what she can do to help whenever she is free. She will pop in and ask, "What else can I do?" She took her own time and resources to create hand-sewn window shades for every room in our school building to ensure our students and our school were safe, and they are proudly displayed. And then she would pop in and say, "Do we need any more window shades? Do we need bigger ones, smaller ones?" Our school is outfit, and every time we see them, we think of Maria and how wonderful she is. Mrs. Gonzalez enjoys her role as a lunch and recess aide and connects with each student on an individual level and has strong connections with our entire student body. Mrs. Gonzalez has been an asset to Lloyd Road in supporting our Spanish-speaking students, particularly students that are new to our country, she supports our ESL students, making them feel warm, welcomed, kind, and supported and cared for, which is something that can be very scary when you're coming to the new country and not speaking the language. So our students are so fortunate, particularly our ESL students. Her students know that she is willing to help and guide them and to give them the best education that they can have at Lloyd Road, and we are so fortunate. And I know Maria is also here tonight with her family and new members of her family. Her daughter Bridgette also works at Lloyd Road, so I'm pleased to get to meet more members of her family, and once again, congrats.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of tonight's recipients. I'd like to bring up Mrs. Beth Hudkewicz, please. It's an incredible honor to recognize this year's MAMS Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Hudkewicz, someone whose impact reaches far beyond the classroom walls. Mrs. Hudkewicz has worked at Madawan Evergreen since 1993 at Cliffwood and most of the MAMS. As an exceptional language arts and special education teacher, she brings deep knowledge, unwavering passion, and contagious enthusiasm to every lesson. Her classroom is a place where all students feel seen, supported, and inspired to grow. But her influence does not stop there. Mrs. Hudkewicz has served on our school's climate committee, ensuring that every voice is heard and every student feels they're loved. She has served as an affirmative action officer. She knows that teaching is not just about academics, but is also about building relationships. She meets students' specific needs, fosters the love of reading in our learners, and Mrs. Hudkewicz is also regular at after-school activity and at community events. Mrs. Hudkewicz is respected by her colleagues. They recognize her professionalism, commitment, heart, and purpose. Many of her colleagues are here tonight to support her. In her spare time, Mrs. Hudkewicz enjoys reading, gardening, yoga, and spending time at the beach. Here tonight to help celebrate her are her husband Tracy and her daughter Audrey. Tonight, we celebrate not just her accomplishments, but the spirit she brings to MAMS each and every day. Congratulations to our teacher.
I'm happy to recognize MAMS Educational Services Professional of the Year, our school nurse, Mrs. Saul. Nurse Saul began her nursing career in 2001, but has worked at MAMS since 2023. In just a short time, she has made an extraordinary impact on the lives of both students and staff members. As our school nurse, Nurse Saul goes far beyond the typical responsibilities associated with her role. Her approach to student health goes beyond treating illnesses and injuries. She works to create an environment where students feel comfortable discussing their concerns. Nurse Saul consistently demonstrates an ability to address uniquely needs of each student. Whether it's managing chronic conditions, administering medications, or offering support for other health challenges, she ensures that every child receives personalized empathetic care. Nurse Saul collaborates with teachers, administrators, and parents to ensure that all students at MAMS are supported. In her spare time, she enjoys cooking, reading, and coding. Nurse Saul is joined tonight by her husband Michael and her children Emily and Ty. Congratulations to our Service Professional of the Year.
And for our last call tonight, we have Mr. Mike Wells, Principal of the High School.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mr. Perez, Cabinet, Department of Education, honored to be here tonight to get to celebrate all of our Teachers of the Year. Special shout-out to Nurse Saul, Ms. Fry, was it Ms. Fry? Ms. Fry, Ms. Hudkewicz, I've had the opportunity to work very closely with them in the past of their graduations to all. Tonight, I'm here to recognize two dedicated members of the Madawan Regional High School family, and I truly mean family. It's an honor to present Dr. Neil Jackman as the Madawan Regional High School Educator of the Year. Dr. Jackman has been a fixture here at the high school since joining our staff in 2004. He's been instrumental in the development of our STEM academy, creating high-level math courses to the district, including AP Calculus AV, AP Calculus BC, Multivariable Calculus, of course, that's offered for dual-credit, we work with the community college. In his spare time, he also teaches at a number of higher institutions, so he's a busy man. Now, he doesn't know this, but while he was out in the building last week celebrating his daughter's graduation from Harvard.
Wow.
They have snuck into some of his classes to see what they had to say about Dr. Jackman. Now, I mention this because Dr. Jackman would never allow me to interrupt his classroom. In fact, I even scheduled all of our security drills around his class just to avoid the awkward conversation when he comes to my office and asks me, "Why must we have these drills?" Which I often reply, "It's the law." When I asked the students, though, their faces lit up. I asked them what they liked about Dr. Jackman and why they feel he should be the Teacher of the Year. Here's a couple things, and what they said. "He is my favorite teacher of my high school career. He is passionate. He plays funny do-nam songs. And when the lesson's gonna be hard, he plays a depth." "He helped me with the college process and prepared me for the interview process. He takes time to teach topics outside of the curriculum because he knows we will need them. He tests critical thinking skills. He runs an efficient class covering a lot of hard material, but making it seem manageable. He's a human calculator while debating problems up on the fly. He has insane room control and commanding presence. He talks a little, but when he does, he has a commanding voice." Now, when I returned to the high school last year, a number of teachers stopped in to say hello, you know, welcome me back. And while there were many teachers that simply just stopped in to say hi, Dr. Jackman came in, sat down in my office, handed the table, and said, "Mr. Wells, I need access to the SAT scores. I used to have them, I need them again." So I said, "Okay." So I made a couple calls and we got them. He needed to make sure that our students were among the best and brightest in the nation. Dr. Jackman, thanks to you very much. So thank you. Please join me in congratulating. Sorry, I have some students here that want to come up, and they have a little gift for Next up, please join me in congratulating Mrs. Amanda Wango, our Madawan Regional High School Educational Support Specialist of the Year. Mrs. Wango's dedication and passion shine through in everything she does. She's the driving force behind so many meaningful programs, serving as the advisor of our Women's Empowerment Club. She coordinates the Husky closet, she leads our blood drive, and is the organizing member of our community volunteer program. She also co-advises our Husky Helpers Program, creating opportunities for students and faculty to connect and serve together, whether making lunches for the blessing parade St. Peter's lunches or supporting other community events. An instrumental part of our new Husky Prep Academy, Mrs. Wango wrote the grant for our Pearls and Gloves Program, and she serves as a vital liaison to the Madawan Borough Recreation Commission and Recycling Program, as well as coordinates our student jobs program. When asked about a motto or quote that defines her, Mrs. Wango simply said, "I don't have one." She just gets up every day and is genuinely happy to come to work. I'll take that. Mrs. Wango, a part of our team, is a well-deserved woman.
Dr. Rolzo, I also wanted to just come in on behalf of the Department of Education to congratulate all of you. It was great for us to hear exactly what peers think about you, what your students think about you, and the reasons why you were nominated. These are nominations that come from staff, students, families, so we appreciate the time that those folks took to nominate somebody to be named to these awards. And I want to take a minute to personally congratulate Dr. Jackman. Both of my children have Dr. Jackman, and we are now friends because his daughter, who just graduated from Harvard, is friends with my daughter. My daughter attended the graduation party, she had a great time, it was great. And so he is a friend as well as my children's teacher, so congratulations for our children. So that concludes the award presentation portion. We do have another presentation that we need to set up for, but we can take a few minutes if anybody would like to take additional pictures and leave for the evening. Thank you. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Perez for the second part of our, sorry, to break on its report. Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Perez for the second part of our presentation, sorry, to break on into report.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, my bad. It's towards the audience. We're very excited about tonight's presentation. Tonight, we have Fred Jossi from City Gate who conducted the Demodul study. We heard feedback from our community, and we had a lot of discussion with our board over the last year and a half in terms of getting, how to conduct a Demodul study. So we hope that everyone will find this very informational, like no idea in terms of looking at historical data, but also where it's going, where we're going in terms of the two towns, the students, our families, our community as a whole, and the growth, which is really, really exciting. So Fred is from City Gate. City Gate's a 38-year-old company, consults. It's a consulting firm specializing in redistricting and school planning. He's worked in terms of specifically enrollment, projection, redistricting software, plus routing. So we intend to hopefully continue collaborating with him in terms of our other needs. 28 years of continuous demographic and redistricting experience in K-12 districts specifically, and these others are listed. He has 27 years hands-on demographic experience, so he's been doing this a long time. In multiple school projects and extensive mapping and analysis experience. So with that, I welcome Fred to our district, and thank you very much, Fred.
Welcome. In the building, you notice that this is 2002, which is when I was born as well. So to be in this school at the same age looks much better than when I was born. We're the same age. So I'm going to go over basically the process that you went up with the numbers, and I'm going to explain the numbers, and how, what to expect, I guess, in the future as the next decade goes on. So to do this, one of the things that I wanted to...
Excuse me, Fred. They really want me to hear it, although we have to say this evening, so we're going to use this microphone. It's also for the recordings. Audio is better when I'm recording.
So in order to get a good idea of what's happening locally, I wanted to find out sort of if what is occurring here matches up with what's occurring around these neighboring schools, what's happening regionally, what's happening in the state, the Northeast, and the U.S. So get an idea of if what's occurring here is the same as everywhere else, or is it specifically different? And so this graphic that I have up basically shows, we start looking at it from a large perspective and work out we have the actual district. To do this, the way we go about coming up with the projection is we look at population in the past and projections of the future. We look at housing, we look at income, we look at birth rates, we look at previous enrollment, new plan housing, future projections of the population, and then we compare them to the, once we have the enrollment projections, we come and we look at the capacities of the school. And then we put our enrollment projections in line with those capacities to determine what is actually going to happen and which schools are going to be impacted by it. So the first thing that I did is I wanted to get an overview of the school district. And these three images are from Google Earth, which allows you to look at historic photography. So this is 2002, 2011, and 2022. What I was trying to find out is if there have been any large-scale development projects. And you can see those pictures, it's a little bit hard to see here, but the pictures are nearly the same. So while there has been development, there hasn't been huge development projects. And we see that in other areas where most of the annexed area, you know, 100, 200, almost. So looking at these graphs, this is from the Census Bureau's 2020, the setting of Census. So in that survey, they actually get total population and different racial demographics, Hispanic origin, as well as housing counts. That's some of the graphics that you see up here. The quadrant on the upper left is the total population. And you can see that the district has grown in population since 2010. In fact, it's grown more than the neighboring districts and as a percentage of total population. The graphic below it is showing the increase in Hispanic population. Now, looking, comparing the top one, the one I was just talking about, the upper left, to the one below it, you can see that the adjacent districts, not all of them have gained population, some have. But here, we have the largest gaining population as a percentage of what we started out with. So we can see that the trend is different here than the neighboring school districts. The bottom one shows Hispanic population change between 2010 and 2020. Now, Hispanic, if you guys remember, you were filling out your Census forms, it's a different question than your race. So you get the choice of selecting whether you're white, African-American, Indian origin. There's a set of five things you can select, five combinations of. And once you're done with selecting race, you can decide whether you are of Hispanic origin or not. So there are two different questions. And we can see that across the board, all of the neighboring school districts, as well as here, there's been a gain in Hispanic population over the decade. The one on the upper right is the housing changes. And you can see that, again, there's been by percentage, a larger gain in housing counts. And the one below it is the minority population. I'm going to get into the detail, get into a little bit more detail with that. But in general, the way that we calculate minority population is looking at anybody who did not select white only on the Census. So if you didn't select yourself as being white only, then we count you as a minority. So as population change goes between 2010 and 2020, starting at across the whole country, you're looking at 7.4% for the decade. In the Northeast, the population growth has been less as there's been migration towards the South and Southwest. New Jersey itself had only a 5.7% population gain. The county had 2.1%, and your neighboring districts actually had less, 0.8%. Here, the population growth was close to 7%, which is close to the average U.S. Again, more than the neighboring, certainly more than the neighboring districts. So looking at the numbers in a little bit more detail, we have between 2010 and 2020, as there's a 6.9% population increase. The white alone, people that selected white alone, actually went down a little bit. African-American relatively stayed the same. Hispanic had a large increase. People identifying as Hispanic origin had a large increase. A minority of population also increased. The housing counts have gone up. The number of housing units has gone up, at least by 1,740 units. That's an increase of 7%. Importantly, the vacancy rates actually have gone down. So even though there's more houses, there's less latency in the area. So the next thing we looked at was income and poverty. And the graph on the left shows the U.S. versus New Jersey versus the district globally. And you can see that the average of the U.S. is around $80,000. Here, we're looking at still household numbers. We're looking at $124,000 almost. So the district has income well above the average household income of the country. The graph on the right is actually interesting because what has occurred there is since 2016, the average household income went from $86,000 to what it is now, for the 2020, is the last number we had, of almost $124,000. So the income in general has gone up quite a bit over the last 2008, 9 years. And the two, so the line that spikes up on the right is the people that are making more than $100,000. The orange line are people that are making between $25,000 and $100,000, which is generally has trended down as more people are essentially getting into the upper income. And people making less than $25,000 is basically slowing down, but generally stable. So the poverty level is not particularly going high or increasing, but the income is actually going up here. So looking at the birth rates, you can see that it had gone up and down before, but the last three years, for which we have data, so the last year of the data is 2022 from New Jersey Department of Health, it's actually gone up every year. The graph on the right, what it shows is going from birth numbers to kindergarten and pre-K. So the pre-K number is in blue, and the kindergarten number is in orange. The kindergarten number has generally stayed close to where it has been. The pre-K numbers have really shot up over the last three years. We're going to talk a little more about that. So the other number that we look at is the long-term population projection. So University of Virginia does this for every state. And we took those numbers and we apportioned them to the district, apportioned back to the state, the county, and the district. The numbers here are adjusted to the district. So the gray bar on the far left is the current number, and it is expected to go up by the end of this decade. And then it stabilizes as the past, with the, in 2040 and 50. The graph on the right shows the same information except by different age groups. And I focus, basically, the data that we have is for 5 and younger, 5 to 9, I believe, and then 10 to 14, and then 4 to 15 to 19. And those are the current in 2030 and 2040. So for the first one, we are basically increasing in the next, during the rest of this decade. The key thing that I wanted to point out here is even for the cohorts that are going down in population, their house back all the way. So this is, whatever this dip is, is temporary. It's not, it's not continuous. So really, I would be looking at the numbers as we are kind of stabilizing in the long term. The other item that we looked at, of course, was residential construction, how many new homes are coming in. And I contacted the Aberdeen Township Planning Office, as well as the Madawan Planning Office, and it provided me with these construction permit information, and which homes have actually had been or underway versus ones that are actually planted. So the information that you see on the left, list of them on the right, what we're expecting. This afternoon, we had a meeting where some of those numbers were changed, and a lot of the projects that is actually have already been constructed across that. And the New Jersey Transit rehab, it's a possible development. It's on the books, but I think the general agreement is that it may actually not happen, so I think this is all right.
The one that's crossed out is completed?
The one that is crossed out is, has been completed, and the students are already here. So they are going to the future projections. So based on these numbers, we actually added those potential students into our projection and added them at the years that they're going to be coming online. So I have the cohort survival ratio. Let me explain what that actually means. It's just a demographic term, meaning how many of this group makes it to the next year. So if you have 100 first graders, when you go to second grade, how many of them are actually going to be there for the second grade? So if it's 100%, that means that you expect, which is in fact, in this case, between 01 and 02, 100% of the kids historically have made it. And if you go to the next line, which is 02 to 03, typically what happens is if you start with 100 kids in the second grade, the next year, you'll probably end up with 100, at least historically, which means there's more kids coming in and out. So we look at, in this case, seven years worth of data and look at what these numbers show. These numbers are not, I wouldn't say they're atypical, but in a lot of school districts, we see kids coming in, let's say, at ninth grade because they go to schools, private schools that only go to eighth grade. Vice versa, we have some situations where you have kids dropping off at ninth grade because they go to some other school when they go to high school. We don't see that here. All the numbers are pretty close to 100%. And that essentially shows that once kids start in this school district, they go all the way to the end. So basically, just as an example, if you see all of a sudden 50 new kids making it to kindergarten this year that you weren't expecting, expect that next year, they'll be in first grade and second grade and third grade. They're going to go through the whole system. Now, what has occurred, which is on the graphic on the right side of the top, is that the green line is the pre-K numbers, and the purple line is the kindergarten numbers. The pre-K numbers over the last three years have really shot up, and they're plateauing at about 440. So based on the conversation that we had this afternoon, there is more pre-K options available now. So that's probably accounts for the increase in that population. That increase has not, it's not enough of a history that I can, you know, if I just take that graph and look at it, well, that picture just keeps going up and up. But that's obviously not going to happen because the space is simply not there. It's not going to get there. But it's worthwhile saying, pointing out that this is actually occurring. You are getting a lot of pre-K students. So this particular slide shows our enrollment projections for the next decade, or 2034, 35. And the purple lines that you see there are the years at which we're adding those new constructions, I guess, new construction. And the graph on the bottom right really shows the total population going forward from here out. And there is a steady growth based on the increase expected in total population and also in birth rates. And basically, over the entire decade, we're looking at about 12% increase in total among those students. The graph on the bottom left, when we do these analyses, what we do is we do a plus and minus 5%. So we basically say, okay, if you're off by 5%, either direction, what is the, what is the, what do the numbers look like? And the high, the graph going up at the top shows the 5% plus, and the one below it at the bottom shows if you're off by 5% below it. And of course, the one in the middle is for the table that the top shows. We also did a capacity analysis to see which schools are going to be out of capacity in which year, based on the numbers that we receive from the architect. And it's a little bit hard to see, but we have the school, and then we have which grade that go to that school currently, and then the next column is the capacity, and the table... And the table in front of it, in green and red, shows the years and the student population for that year at that school. And whatever it turns red is when basically the school is out of capacity. Now, these capacities are ninety percent based on, based on reasonably small class sizes. They're not overpopulation. So there's some room here to adjust. But in 2030, you're going to basically see capacity issues. Now, at the pre-K three level, I think adjusting the boundaries a little bit will, will fix the problem. And then the problem that later gets to the four to five employee group. And that's a little bit more tricky because it might require some greater configuration to eliminate the, the over, the overcapacity numbers. The table below it just shows a year-to-year plus or minus how many kids are getting added and subtracted from the school based on projections. And the graphs at the bottom show the same information with the dotted line. It's very hard to see. That shows the capacity. So each one essentially gets overcapacity met by how much. So the, the maps that we have here show where the students are. And the first one on the far left shows sort of the density of the students. So you guys can see sort of where the largest number of students are coming from. The graphic on the right shows all the students. It's a little bit tiny here. Let me see. So the first one is Cambridge Park. And that shows all the students that are going to, to that school. The next one shows the Cliffwood, Ravine Drive and Stratford by district. And it's, as I said, it's a little bit difficult to see, but I'm trying to show how many kids are actually attending out of their school district or out of their zone. It's not that many, and it's not, it was not unusual enough to cause any concern. It's probably kids that are teachers, teachers, children, or other exceptions that you typically have. The other three show the Lloyd Road and the middle school and the high school. And generally, the, the students are very equally dispersed around some of the schools. There's, other than the fact that they're generally equally dispersed through the district, there's really not much else that we can get from this information. So this is the general conclusion. It really did high claim. This was what I already discussed about the mid-level projection for 2024 being twelve percent increase to four hundred, four thousand four hundred and twenty-two students. And that's really the, the main takeaway from here. And the capacity issues will primarily be at the, at the elementary school level. The middle school and the high school are not yet capacity. And so that should, at least for the next ten year, ten years, it should. And as I said, the, the redistricting and in some way, the possible wave of configuration might be the future between two and five years from now.
Thank you so much. Very thorough work. I appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the board? I just wanted to ask you, I just want to ask this to you now, first of all. Thank you so much. When you took a look at the median income, did you put the eighty-six thousand in a machine calculator to be able to compare apples to apples?
Say it again.
When you took the median income initially of eighty-six thousand dollars, did you put it in a machine calculator that were actually comparing apples to apples? Because when I put the eighty-six thousand dollars into twenty, twenty-three cost, that's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which is very different than comparing what that money is. So I was wondering if there's an impact.
So the numbers, we don't project the numbers forward. So what we could, what we do is we compare that number to the other jurisdictions.
Oh, so you are comparing numbers.
So, correct. So the, the increase in income hasn't been as high in other areas, you know, what I, what I.
I get you now. Thank you very much.
So just to add to that, so we have a lot of questions about the definition of under adequacy. So that really illustrates that the actual income level growth in this area really bears out what the state is telling us. Obviously, you know, there are some issues with that, how to account for that in terms of getting that extra income. But let me decide. It, it does show that as far as the state sees the district, they feel that the income level of the families in the district is, saw it being reported higher than surrounding districts.
They're going to see the same numbers. So the sources, the source is the same. They get it from the American Community Survey, which is a survey that the Census Bureau does that information. So they will get it from the same, so they get it from the same place. And, I mean, I showed the income numbers. Obviously, that's not the whole picture because a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year is, doesn't mean as much as if you lived in Washington. You'd be rich over there. Here, you probably couldn't afford to buy all of a sudden. I mean, there's, this doesn't account for it. But if you go into a place and you see that, that income level as, as if it were below national levels, then you know that that school is going to be distressed in a lot of ways. That's not happening here when you compare it to the state, when you compare it to the, to the national numbers.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
My question was on the slide about, you know, about the income levels again. And this was something that I was almost kind of chastising myself, probably making too many jumps of assumptions. But I, I was looking at the, you know, that, that mid-range goes down some, and then the high range goes up a lot, leading to just literally more households in our, our town. Is it fair to say we're seeing, obviously, the average housing growth, community growth, vacancy down? Is it that the people moving in have more income? Or is that too much of a jump, too much of an assumption?
It's not, because that's the conclusion that I made.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
But it's, you know, you look at a lot of things. And, you know, when I'm looking at this, I'm just going to gossow data. And I'm trying to figure out, okay, what's actually happening here? I can't point to one thing and say, well, this guy did it. He made the break. It made the whole thing go up. But in general, I saw people moving in, and I saw the break at the, at the income go up. And it, it wasn't like, if you, if I look at that graph, it was like this for a long time, and then it just went this. So that tells me that either a bunch of people won the lottery here, or people moved in with money.
Yeah, we, we all noticed that. We all had at least one neighbor, new neighbor who bought their house for cash. So it's good for that. But it's just, it just helps us with thinking about how changes, like, like state and, like, the state looks at us from income levels, whether like current residents that are for a long time residents have really increased their income greatly, or is that, that new folks have run that or coming in to have a income. I guess it's hard to tell.
Correct. There, there is, there does seem to be population. Because if everybody here was, that lived here was, their income was going up generally, you would have seen that graph be a lot, like, throughout. But the fact that it just doesn't this, that kind of tells me that you had a sudden influx.
Thank you. Just one question. Because I think one of the concerns a lot is that the big study was, I'm trying to understand how many students are going to be coming in. So the national average per one hundred homes per unit is forty-one, so for us it's thirty-seven, right? So that's.
Correct. So, so what I did was, if I, if I didn't have those numbers, I would have just gone with the national number. But what I, what I had was, I knew how many housing houses were, and I know how many students that were coming out of the current number of homes. So all I did is I looked at, I divided those numbers, it's just based on that at that point, and figured out how many kids at each grade level were coming out of the housing that is here. And so we had new housing. And again, there are other jurisdictions where they give super detailed information. So they're like, okay, this apartment complex has this many permitted two-bedroom houses, this many three-bedroom, and so, and so I can actually assign how many kids typically come out of two-bedroom houses versus three-bedroom houses. But here, I had some information that was detailed, and some information that was, they just have a permit. So I couldn't do that.
It's a little far out of the thing.
Right. So I couldn't, I couldn't go to the very detailed one-on-one level and have zero details on that. So that's why I used the total number of houses as protection. And I got the kids that were at the district level and then a portion of the property.
And so the, so we should just subtract the fifty that this is already constructed and then potential transit, transit station.
Right. So I'm actually going to redo these. I just sort of got this information this afternoon, and I'll put those back. But the way that, that we do this is we have a giant spreadsheet with everything in it. And then whenever we change, the, the bottom changes. So I'm going to update those. I'm going to generate these and just actually go on the actual numbers that match up correctly. It isn't that many, I mean, five students here, and five students, it's not going to change the number dramatically, but I might demonstrate.
So we're really going to see impact of the numbers?
Yes.
I have a question. So the original data that you received about the construction, the number of units, housing things like blast works or, you know, kindergarten, where did you get that information? You got it directly from the towns, right?
Correct. So I called the, the planning department and built Madawan and Aberdeen, and they gave me the name of the worst projections, the same person at both places. And she basically sent me many of this, this, of the project.
So today, there were updates, as mentioned. So I'm just curious as to why, why there was a discrepancy. You did a lot of work together with this information, and then today I applied it to kind of adjust based on what was given this afternoon. So just curious as to if that's usual, or, I mean, we were happy to have the correct information included here because we want to make sure it's all accurate. I just was, I found that to be strange. And you already did your due diligence, and the numbers kind of changed.
So, so this is what I did. I'm generally a suspicious person. So when I got that data, that list, I went in Google Maps, and I did street views, and I went to each one of these addresses, and I looked to see what I saw. Now, those pictures will get updated all the time, so there's a delay between some pictures and others. And for Blast Works and, I think it was Madawan Junction, I saw that there was construction pictures. So then I just said, okay, well, these two are actually happening. And the other ones just look like a, like a side thing or something. So that, that was my check. So I tried to sort of double-check everything, but I didn't know that that other one finished. So I sent that argument in, and it was still showing as that was a part.
And then the one that is, was starring in the presentation, just so everybody here knows, that's basically a project that's on the books, but it's not, that's actually a project from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. So, and at this point, it doesn't look likely, but it's still potentially a hundred and twenty-two percent. Although, you know, probably unlikely. We can't really discount it because we won't know.
Sorry. I, I will probably pass it on. I'm going to try not to say it, but I heard that on the stuff. But anyway, no, I had this one. I want to make sure I understood, because you kind of mentioned it just, I just want to make sure I understood it right. So the, we should treat the extended bump up in K through three and the bump up at four to five to then we'll back down. If this is like a permanent bump.
Correct. So I looked at, so one of, because of this way, the sharp increase that we had in pre-K, and there's not enough history for me to be reliably, if I can, if I base it on the, if I base it on five years, then your numbers basically do this, which, which I know that's not going to happen. And if I base it on the last two or three years, then it does this, which I also know is not going to happen. So what I did is I, we talked this afternoon about the number of seats that are going to be there, which is around five hundred. So that's where the numbers are going to have to stay unless this is more appropriate. But what I did have is correlation between kindergarten and birth rates. So what I, at least with the report I did, is I did pre-K, I'm sorry, I did birth, pre-K as one step, and then I did birth, pre-K as a second step. And that's the one that I carried with the remainder of the data, because I had seven years' worth of core data to take.
So that, as these two, the, you know, we can have, we can limit the seats for pre-K. You can't tell community residents that they can't see their kids starting to appear. So, yeah, I, I think so.
So I just wanted to bring up, um, the program conclusions, something that I want everybody to be aware of and mind, that there will likely at some point be a resoning, which means, you know, the columns of certain neighborhoods in which students they go to, they change, probably will change. So just so they keep in mind, anybody's moving in and they want to move into a certain neighborhood because they want to go to a specific elementary school, that may or may not be the case. So we're trying to make sure they know that. And then secondly, there will, there will be also, and likely to be, a change in the grade levels at the buildings. So right now, we have a separate school just for intermediate or the fifth. Could be, you know, I don't, you know, something we have to start working on, I guess, but could be taken by all the elementary schools. You know, we don't really know what that looks like, but it's, but the conclusions are that we will be looking at some changes in the zoning at the grade level buildings. Correct?
Correct. So what I shared, I, you know, I'm sorry, I read this afternoon, is that walking to the right, district, district has not taken an approach that we cannot guarantee that can totally build to, to their building for their, for certain film for. So that's why it's like for community members living here, you know, I'm supposed to go to Stratford, but like, do a new school, now I'm going to Stratford, going to Ravine Drive, it's because that building particularly like Stratford is that passing. So in order to be fully transparent in terms of where the families are coming in and registered, not just preschool, but even at our K, like, as Fred mentioned, the K to three watch and the home, you want to make sure that kids have equal and fair education at each of our buildings that we go upon, or trying to avoid one building having more than others. So which we have seen in the last two years at Stratford. So in terms of the redistricting and the zoning, and to share that, where the issue is, that we have to, after here, I'm going to try to share with us the report that we want, we, we will be fully transparent and kind of take the approach in terms of that in many forms. So families know way ahead of time in terms of where students will be sent. And also get that input. I don't know. I don't know, I mean, it's a learning experience, I think, for all of us, I think, for the school right now. Obviously, redistricting happened like a long time ago, because Lloyd Road was an elementary building. I don't know what you thought it was, but, uh, whatever. So we will be asking for community input, and also, obviously, that impacts the funding as well. So we need to plan that, and also plan budget as well to decide at the same time.
So, I know the charge I'm going to just come through, so, sorry, here. So in terms of the elementary schools, the one that is closest to capacity is Stratford by far. So that's the one that specifically taught you about Stratford, is very close to hitting capacity, as the other two are pretty, you know, at a healthy level in terms of numbers. So that's really where the zoning has to, right?
Yes. What? So, and I also want to add that, so the planning has to start, correct, in some sense, to give us a little bit of information to, to process the planning starts, planning, just so we're clear. And then the presentation has been followed. So it's like, we're planning for that 2030, or even planning according to what the phases of the units. So if you look at 28, 29, then you have the year 2020. So, which we look at.
Not to add all the solutions or anything right now, but when they have the community forum, and they, oh, a conversation, somebody considers interfacing with the Chamber of Commerce to get in touch with realtors in this area, so that they know, so they don't tell people things aren't true.
I did three times today, this afternoon. There's a lot of props, as I mentioned.
I didn't think of the Chamber of Commerce.
No, it's the realtors. I love realtors. I didn't think of using the Chamber of Commerce, but I actually mentioned to Ms. Perez that we needed to tell realtors in the area to not say, this house goes to Stratford, or this house was rented, because that may or may not be the house. Yeah, that's it. They're in the district. Any other board member questions? I'm going to open it up to questions just about this presentation. Please leave a brief. So that we can, I know there may be specific to this, so I'm going to forego waiting until public comment. So if you want to come up and ask, whether it's.
Hi, my name is Abby with 299 World. Okay, so I guess my question is, aside from redistricting, what happens when we're at capacity? Like, when we're full, right? And we've moved everyone from left to right, and right to left, and all the parents are mad because we're being in Stratford, Stratford's in Clipwood, and everyone's freaking out. And now we have the Lloyd Road Elementary School, and everyone's like, what the heck is that? Once they're full, because it looks like we're going to be full, now what? That's my question. I know you guys can't talk, but oh, do you really? And also, how does that affect our budget? So we're doubling in size, but we're only able to go up a certain percentage, because that's what the law is. Like, what do we do? And then we have people, the city council is just like, hey, let's just keep on building, let's just build, right? So like, that's, I guess that's my question. Like, what's, like, what happens? We're like a crazy, like, what happens? Like, how do we pay for it? How do we buy? Could the school, excuse my other question, could the Board of Education, school district buy property? I mean, I know you can, but do we have, like, even, like, because I know, like, for example, just as a quick example, 160 vein right now is up for auction, right? So, you know, it's slated for, I'm trying to change the zoning, so like, maybe put this board of ed, go in with the towns, or maybe try to buy the apartment.
No, I said we're waiting. No, but we, those preliminary, very preliminary discussions are kind of coming back to our heads and happening a little bit. But yeah, I mean, it's, we need, you have to get space. Right? So that's part of the budget, that's a completely different story. Two, I will say, to the credit of what we heard today from these Aberdeen regarding the development at Glassworks, they are not going to, they're going to really prevent anything more than two bedrooms in the new units that are being built there. So the developer asked for, like, two-three bedrooms. The information we got today is that they will not allow that. So there is two, I have two witnesses. They will only go up to two-bedroom units in the phase two of Glassworks, which right now is still phase one.
I guess for the school, that would be possible. I guess for the town's housing issues, then I guess not so great, because we still have to do, the reason why they have to change it from I to D is because we needed more low-income housing, and for limiting it to two, we might be cutting off our nervous system by that.
No more question for the town?
Yes, I will be asking them on June 17th when they're going to talk about zoning 160, so, thank you. I wanted to get information from you guys first, so that I can go back and go, by the way, thanks for showing up. And this is what's going on, so, thank you.
Hi. So a little disappointed that it only goes to 2020, because especially like myself, I know that I entered the town, and a lot of other people from New York entered the town after 2020. So I know that is going to be factored in a little bit. I'm also going to tell you that I hear quite a bit from other towns, that what makes our town so attractive is our preschool. A lot of the other towns don't have this full-day preschool. They don't have 500 seats. They don't, you know, like, pretty much, you get into the preschool where the other towns, you know, they have like 100 seats, or it's like half-day, or something like that. So like, the numbers make sense to me, because we do all for the preschool, and we do when people come who are looking for that whole-day preschool, so that's the first thing. The second thing I wanted to mention was, I'm.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Sinter. I want to make sure it's a question.
Oh, okay.
It's a public comment, you'll.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that's the question part. So you mentioned the meeting that you had today. I was just wondering, who was at that meeting? Can we ask that?
So first, Ms. Sinter, I just want to address the preschool. So when we, when the district was selected to apply for that preschool expansion aid, they stayed or you determined that there were close to 500 preschools, right? Right. So if they did not come, and three and four, that that cohort was going to come, and that kid, it wasn't going to be factored for kindergarten's, but we'll say, um, Randall, State 250, which is what we're seeing. So the other towns had opportunities to, I live in Hessen, so I'm full transparency, they were eligible to apply. They, it was community that, I believe, did that. So I just want to share that, because for us, we had a lot of, a lot of community input, we applied for the preschool expansion, and, you know, saying, are you applying, are you applying? So we're going to fail the first round, we're reapplying again, we're applying again, which we did. So that's one. And I do, anyway, to see that districts, so right now, we have someone from the Department of Education, preschool district this afternoon, we're at, we're at third, the state of New Jersey, the third of our school districts had that preschool expansion. Their push is to, we'll see what happens with the election, but it's been a push to happen. In terms of today's meeting, President Liz, Board Leader, she was participating this morning, Town Mayor, Mayor of Aberdeen, and the two town managers that Madalena and.
And everyone was invited, correct? And the whole councils were invited?
So the councils were invited, and I agree to share the, today they left with the information.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, just on this presentation? I just want to bear, this will be on the website, I want to come tomorrow. It's hard to really get the information with just the report, but this slide presentation will be on the website, and hopefully you can get the video as well, so you can have that information. Moving on, President's Report, I really only wanted to share one thing.
Can I do this, hold it?
Yeah. Sure. Also, thank you so much, really, really thorough report, lots of great information. And we really appreciate you traveling from outstate to come help us present today, and also to meet with our town leadership. Thank you so much. Fred, I just asked real quick, Fred, before you leave. I just want to make sure, I know we know how to get in touch with you, but we're definitely going to need input, what we need, like, the redistricting, redistricting thing, I can't say that word, and transportation, maybe, if we're rounding, so I'm hoping we continue to work with, right, that we all. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, and just starting, I'm thinking of this, you guys are just helping send you guys a little help. This is what that's next.
Please, please do.
You guys have a good night.
So I really only have one thing to share before we dive into our agenda items, which is, earlier this year, we, through the diligence of our administrator in this case, applied for a fitness grant for the National Fitness Council campaign, and a local recreation grant. We were able to secure a big proportion of the funding for the fitness grant. So what this is, is it's called Fitness Court. It's actually very cool. It's, it looks kind of like a tennis court, where the net with the is a wall. And on one side, there's a stationary, I don't want to call it equipment, because it's not things like the bicycle, but it's, it's shapes, so like a square box, a platform, and you can do exercises on those, like, step-ups. They have on the wall bars, so you can do pull-ups, rings, all kinds of equipment that stays in place and can withstand elements to be outside year-round. The other side is a flat pad, where you could do things like have yoga classes, or yoga instruction, you know, dance, zumba, you know, those types of things. So it's a really cool element to add to our school property. We're looking at it for the high school, in front of where the dance and the band room is, there's like a big grassy area, so that would be pretty much overtaken by that. And it would be open to the community as well. So part of the grant, we did have to inform the towns, and actually just, I would, that's where the school's located, to kind of co-sign, that they knew that this was happening, and they were on board, and they were very generous to do that for us. This case, we did up and had it sent in quickly, and so we were approved for that, and it's been going well. And this is where everybody else comes in. We are really close to the gap amount that we still need to make up the difference between the grant and what actually will cost, including fees, and had for the location. And so we've gotten very, very generous donations from local businesses, some of our own partners and members that we work with. And we've gotten a little bit of inquiry about how community members can help. So if you wanted to give $25, $50, you know, I even had somebody offer $500 today. So those donations can be written out, a check made out to MARS D, the district, and in the memo, just write Fitness Court, and hopefully we can make up the difference. Unfortunately, this case has a sore throat, so I don't want her to speak, but I don't know. Fred, if you could just explain a little bit more, it's just, I wish we could have used that to show the video. We'll put it up on the website. It's a really nice equipment area that we could even work into the phys ed curriculum.
Yes, we will be working, it is part, it will be part of the phys ed curriculum. We thought that it was an excellent opportunity for school and community to come together, and also in the spirit of all this, we have that, um, for families and community members that struggle. So it was nice to be able to walk and exercise. This will be the first that the county, that's what we're doing, so we're excited. We have been receiving information, so we thank everyone, and we will have a future meeting as well. Projected timeline, it's maybe from this case, because of our voice, but projected timeline is for, also, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
And we, part of this, if there are, if anybody knows anybody that has a business that wants to give a little bit more, I don't know exactly what the threshold is, but I'm sure you can call the business office and find out. There is a logo promotional piece, so that already the donations that we've gotten are ranging from $5,000 to $10,000. So you are getting your logo on Fitness Court in exchange for that. We have a rendering with our husky colors, it looks fabulous. There's a video showing how you have all the equipment is used, that we will try to get up online, so everybody can see it. And it was actually shared in the patch today, details about it. So we'll try to get all this information up on the website and share it as much as we can through, like, the school Facebook pages, just so everybody can, if they'd like to contribute, can get us a little finish line. We're really close, but as we've been discussing, we don't have a lot of wiggle room in the budget, so we want to move forward without having it really funded completely, so that's the goal. Okay, moving on to the agenda, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Leepin, I know that you have a little bit of update as well, just for review.
Yes, thank you, good evening. We're looking forward to some new initiatives, expanding some current opportunities for students in the 25, 26 school year. Just wanted to provide the most highlights, some of what we mentioned in the agenda as well. We're expanding Tools of the Mind curriculum to include kindergarten next year. Ravine Drive will actually, has started this year, will be in year two of the program. It's like piloted year one, this is clear. That is at no cost, is to partner with Tools of the Mind for a pilot. Clipwood and Stratford Elementary Schools will start year one in the fall. Training, staff training will begin over the summertime, and this is part of our PEA funding. Foundations for grades K-2 will be entered in year two, giving our students a better jumping off point for phonics development and early literacy as they return in the fall. Teachers will continue to there, convenient for this program next year as well. Grades four or five are adding a full year elective called Husky System Ahead. The focus will be on science and engineering through hands-on projects, experiences, that's what's going to next agenda. At Lloyd Road, we're also realigning the grade level home schedules in effort to continue to maximize instructional time. Dr. Bob Medier, the principal, will be sharing more with families later this month. At the middle school, our sixth grade students will engage in a new science curriculum, where they will explore science through inquiry-based questions, conduct investigations, collect and analyze data, use models, explain science phenomena, in addition to doing science readings, discussions, lessons that build student understanding of neuroscience concepts. This will be expanded to grades seven and eight over the next four years. For some students in grades seven and eight, next year, there will be a step in humanities enrichment course added. This hack year course will begin the second half of next school year. Staying at the middle school for just a moment, over the past few weeks, we've engaged in default reflection and reviewed our approach to identifying students for our honors programs. After careful consideration of our initial placement decisions, in light of our ongoing commitment to student success, we made adjustments for the upcoming school year, where some students, specific student details regarding honors classes will be coming directly from the middle. Moving to high school, we are looking forward to adding some electives, including courses like History of Rock and Pop, Music Business, Music Business Industry, Science Engineering Entrepreneurship, which is my course. Mindfulness 2, and a work-based learning course for our seniors as part of our efforts to continue to expand our career technical education for our students at the high school. And then over the next year plus, they'll be hearing more of us offering security at the high school. Overall, for the next few work meetings, we'll be able to share with the board updates on our student attendance efforts, updates to state testing, and we'll share updates to our data dashboard as well. To the agenda, there is one action item this evening, that's item A, travel action. So we are prepared and looking forward to approve the travel agendas listed. The remaining part is for consideration, which we have actually taken at the next meeting. Item B1, which is on the bottom of page one, continues on page two. These are new courses that are being offered for next school year. Curriculum Friday will happen about in the summer. I just happened to mention some of these in my previous presentation, so that goes on to page 311. Item number two, we have one additional non-residents to per row for 25, 26 school year. The board approved, well, this is the last meeting, this is one additional student. The board approved, both of those in the last meetings, just one additional student. Just to remind the board like last month, the finance agenda, we can see in purple, these are our rules, so they're not new, they're purple. If they are black, it is new, and I'll pause, bring you to a couple of those. So items three and four, those are our rules. On the top of page four, item number five, it's black, so this is something new, this is the Tools of the Mind curriculum that I just mentioned a few minutes ago, you can see some more details, and they get that costs covered under PEA. Six and seven, rules. On page, on page five, items eight through twelve are rules. Page six, items thirteen through sixteen are rules. Just want to pause for a moment on the bottom of page six, item number sixteen, just to highlight to the board, the Regional Professional Development Academy, you can see this on the bottom of the next page, for twenty-two hundred dollars. And this is one of the best fields of professional development around, where we pay one price and then staff go to an unlimited number of professional development offerings here right at the Academy, they can meet with colleagues, and all the topics are topical to curriculum instruction, but more importantly, to what teachers are teaching them on. So that's an important point for us, and the overall cost is well worth it. On page seven, items seventeen through twenty, they are renewals. On page eight, twenty-one through twenty-five, renewals. On page nine and eleven, we're going to pause for a couple of these renewals. Item number twenty-seven, this is a renewal, this is the foundations, also language training. It's our foundations, which I mentioned a few moments ago. Then this is ongoing support, so the cost includes additional resources that we need each year. There's ongoing professional developments since we are in year two. Staff have been trained throughout the school year and will continue to be trained next year, because that is an important piece of this program, that their support for staff in order to help kids. Item twenty-eight is a renewal, item twenty-nine is a renewal, I want to put this out to the board, so EIB is our research partners. So if we talk about things like staff rounds, attendance, surveys, this is the group that's behind the scenes that helps us have to, in order to push some of these initiatives out to the community and to our schools, they're an important piece of that. They also have a big focus on curriculum instruction as well, so that's an important piece, and we're proud to make that recommendation for everyone. Item thirty-zero. Page ten, items thirty-one through thirty-five are rules. I'll pause on number thirty-six. So item number thirty-six, that I just mentioned a few moments ago, about grade six, the new science curriculum, so activate learning is vendor, OpenSci is the curriculum. So all those resources I mentioned a few moments ago, that we're looking forward to launching that in the fall for sixth grade, that continues on page eleven. And on page eleven, the last item, item number thirty-seven, this is to approve Amplify, the vendor, to provide us with Dibbles, the product. So Dibbles, what it is, is a universal screener for students in grades K to three. So this is important for the board committee to know that just recently, this school year, the Department of Education has put out a mandate for all schools in New Jersey that we have to two times a year assess students in K to three on early literacy in order to gauge where they're at, so we need to have a screener in order to do that. Dibbles is one of those approved programs, it's highly recommended, it's research-based at the University of Oregon, and with that comes online component that we can assess the students, teachers can have the data analyzed for them, creates whole groups, provides lesson plans, all the support that teachers would need in order to gauge where students are early literacy. It's a unfunded mandate, which means that we're required to do it and there is no money behind it. So this is a program that we knew this probably wouldn't be coming, and we'd love to go to Dibbles anyway, so we had already budgeted for Dibbles prior to the mandate. Some good news, this will come on the finance agenda, we did apply for a grant, that was on the last agenda before we moved to the application. We got good news, we're going to receive some grant money for this particular program, so some of the costs will be offset by the grant. And when you look at the overall cost, there's two things, there's a purchase services and there's a professional development. The professional development is very important to support staff, and the cost, well, it's tied in, it is, it's year one implementation, so when we get back next year, the cost actually will come down, because we will need everything from year one until year two. So the, to be, though, projecting where we're going to go with the cost, and we have some weight offside it, and we budgeted for it, okay? That includes curriculum instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Motion and a second to approve curriculum construction agendas. I'm going to ask the first question. I was going to ask that about the cost pulling down, because after we implemented the professional development, cost pulling down, what about number thirty-six? Is that an annual cost, or is that just a one-time for the curriculum?
So there's one-time costs for the initial purchase of resources. So OpenSci as a curriculum, actually it's, Fred, because OpenSci as a science community wants schools to do science phenomena-based curriculum, which means hands-on experiments. The curriculum itself is free, that's good, the resources are going to cost money, so the initial purchase is to get all the kids going. There's, there is a recurring cost, not as much, but has to be replenished, so this applies. If you're doing hands-on experiments, they can use up the stuff, it has to be replenished, so there will be a recurring cost.
Thank you. I also just want to comment that this is not the first time that I hear planning ahead, seeing things coming, having the foresight to know that this money is going to be needed and allocating it, so that that stuff, I'm really, really appreciative of. Mr. Lehman, I just want, sorry, this is, I just wanted to ask for a, I love the branding science, and I know we've talked a lot about it, I just wanted to know if I, they'll be using the labs, hands-on, a lot of this is going to be not just for study or motivating activities or labs and stuff?
We are, so I'll give you a quick example, just if you want to talk about sixth grade science, so the topics that are covered in this particular curriculum resource, here are the topics, so it's light and matter, thermal energy, climate, solar cycling, rock plates, rock plate tectonics, natural hazards, cell systems. So you can see that there's a variety of topics there, which is appropriate for those who want, a separate taste of one of different things, and within each of those units, each one has hands-on experiments and experiences that kids can engage with. This particular curriculum is designed to start with questions, so students should be asking questions about the topics, and then the lessons guide them through answers to their questions.
So, I also wanted to say thank you on the science, please, because I know we had a lot of conversations on that. We know the scores in the middle school, the assigned scores are not where they need to be, so we're looking to improve them, and I do think that hands-on learning will help tremendously, so I know it'll be a slow build, but I'm very happy, because I think giving them the hands-on learning will help them understand that on a deeper level, because as we've talked, once they get to high school, they're expected to know how to do that, and so I think that'll help bridge that gap, so I'm very happy to see that. Also, just for the public to know, I know I ask this every year, but we review, there's a lot of things here, subscriptions, programs, every year you guys review and make sure that they're being used before we just sign up again.
Yes, so for each technology program, we've provided various courses. So my team likes to particularly push a course twice a year, January, we, from our parts, start with initial contributions, and then again, in Bay, just so you can see, generous touches between half a year of that time we get to Bay, all of those happen. That helps us gather these decisions. So there have been over the past few years, programs that have not been reviewed by the district, which is, that's not so.
And then I just wanted to say thank you too, because I submitted a lot of questions in the market about, I tend to go back to, it's pretty easier to compare costs, just if they're above twenty percent, that's typically what I ask for below, so thank you, because your information supply was very thorough, and I really appreciate that, because a lot of the reasons why the cost is going up is with this program, expansion, things like that, and I'm so thankful, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Student services, there are no action items this evening, so are these renovation for June sixteenth meeting. Item number one, rest of the board to consider approving for our high school graduation for this year, a provider for a sign language interpretation. Item number two, to the group who wants to do bedside instruction, as listed. Rest of item number three, the board to approve students out of district placement for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, these are, these are due out ahead of time, who will be out of district, so that's on page one, page two, and page three eleven. Item number, which is like the previous agenda, considering, per these rules. Item number four, we're asking the board to approve the previous and following providers for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so again, these are rules, this is from pages three through eight. If the chart there happens to be, there are a couple that are not, so they are new, pages three through eight are renewals. So we go to page eight of eleven. Item number five, we're asking the board to approve partnership to provide, we are training for students in grades six through nine, and also students at the academy, set no cost to the district. Six is a rule. Item number seven, this is news, this is rest of which will approve our partnership for curriculum for our PEA, which again, is listed for by students, high school through transition to twenty-one-year-olds, in particular in our service. Going on to page nine, item P is a rule, I just want to point out to the district that we are recommending our continued partnership with the YMCA to provide counseling and social services for students, that's at no cost to the district. Item number nine, rest of the board to again, re-improve our partnership with Center for Independent Living, this is at no cost to the district. Item ten is a rule, going on page ten of eleven, just want to point out on this page, item number thirteen, this came to the board in a previous agenda, but rest of the board to approve learning ally, it's at no cost to the district, this was done through a grant. Fourteen to fifteen are rules, they continue on page eleven of eleven. Item number sixteen is also a rule, back in the student services.
Thank you, can I have a motion and a second to approve student services agenda? I'll second. Any questions?
I have a question about the CEP evaluation, so it's a huge variation of prices from five hundred to seven hundred dollars, is there any particular way that you try to pay the five hundred dollars, so it depends on the way it's taken to the board, how it's chosen?
It depends on the assessment and the level of testing that you're doing, and what are you requiring to do.
So even though it says CEP evaluation, it's much more detailed, the court's saying here?
Yes, and it also depends sometimes on fitness and the availability, and also any of those providers, next time, maybe to use it first next, as long as, so that, yes, it depends on the cost of the money. Mr. Lehman, I just have a question, I know we have effective school solutions for ourselves to teachers, that we use that, that, as well, so I can see that, is that not on this school design, or?
It's a, went to RFP last year, so it's a two-year contract, so that's why you're going to, it's going to be, yeah.
I just wanted to have a question back. Okay, thank you, so that would be up for removal any year?
Yeah, so we're going through the same process that they, and, and, it's, it's just, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lehman, just for the record, I know I had asked this earlier, just wanted to ask again the board, for number three, I know there's, you know, all the children that are going to be out of district moving forward or projected for next year, these are not new, these are students that have been out and that they're just kind of all in one spot with their statement, and so, as a board member, I just ask, is, I, at first look, these are going to be new and or incoming, but these are students that have already been lucky and or have already have been out, these are not new?
Correct, that account for correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are asking the board to take action on several items, item two thousand and six to be exact, which you can, our staff already, reservations, a reservation of legal absence and quickness, instructional instruction as listed. On page two of six, we need to add, which is item, actually, sorry, into our regular agenda, that we're going to ask the board to take action on, June sixteenth, we have nothing of reservations or contractions yet. Item D, leave some absence as listed. Case three of six, uh, regular activities, non-athletic as listed, we have nothing of construction, curriculum developers, but we'd most likely have any there, the sixteen instructional assistance, that's up to the teachers, like, and additional transfers like, page four of six, we have, item six, a medical parent instructor as listed, we have item seven, so nurses for our two-five and two-six as listed, and our mentor teachers, which we're still working on, to fill those, that people have the vacancies filled and share with the community. Item number nine, we have our additional anti-plate plate coordinator and the school anti-plate specialist as listed, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which goes to eight six, sorry, yes, eight six. Then we have on instruction, which we haven't figured this out yet, but we have staff rate changes as listed for overloads, and then we had no college students, no volunteers in six to six, and other, we have the end from our last meeting listed, comprehensive equity plan, which is a three-year plan, and additional assistance in all school districts in New Jersey, based on compliance when it comes to equity and practices and policy that we go to, to the state by June twenty-third. We have an annual appointment tracker of school budgets as listed, of our position, JavaScript revision as listed. And then we have high school midterm exam progress as listed, and improvements of twenty-five through ninety-six settlement, and finally, we have our salary, salary adjustment, and then we have the Madeline, which is a high school curriculum, which, a lot of the fascinating, exciting programs that Mr. Lehman spoke of, that really actually supports a lot of those in career and technical education of programs. That, in, of course.
Thank you, can I have a motion, a second to approve this? I'll second. I just, I have a question. I heard you say that you were looking at something that's not for actions, like that you expected to see, I didn't, I missed what that section was. And while you're thinking of that, do we think, do we, I don't know the timing of reservations and retirements, when would be like the last?
Yeah, fortunately, we don't, we don't have a, it could be.
But it's never the fall of year?
It could be at some time, so we can retire.
Anytime between when, until now, September first?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
It could be, until resigning from a position.
Yes, well, resignation could be anytime, but retiring?
You can be retired anytime, depending on the time, but that's for certain.
I mean, resignation, if you're going to retire, that makes sense, and I'm still, still learning, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other, any other, it's a curriculum which we have.
Oh, curriculum, oh, so that'll all be done during the summer, so we may have some takers on that, which, okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for policy. This is a second read that we are asking the board to take action on adoption. We have several policies that we discussed at our last meeting, just to bring particular focus, sexual harassment of students, we had spoken to the council, Mr. Rupert, suggested that we use the armed rights of. We had spoken to the council, Mr. Rubin, suggested that we use the armed rights of evidence standard. I don't know if the board would like to hear from Mr. Rubin about that.
Not. Well, specifically, under the regulations, we have the choice of what level we want to have to rule sexual harassment. The evidence information needs are likely not a hundred percent. Fire chain, they're considering the higher district as well. The evidence is utilized for this data.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. And we also had a particular question in terms of equal access of student organizations. And that just included that we wanted to keep protective classes listed, and they are listed as such. That includes policy.
Thank you. Finance agenda this case. No. Oh, sorry. Motion is second to accept the policy agenda. Call motion and questions. Got some questions. Okay, that's my question. Um, okay. Oh, sorry. I forgot. This case, this case does not have a voice, but I am going to ask Ms. Case to tap. I'm making any errors here. So on the agenda this evening for board approval, there are no action items. We're asking the board for the ramp for items listed on page one of seven, which includes one, received acceptance of the board secretaries report, treasuries report, approval of appropriations transfers. Item number four, group bills. Item number five, final bills list of transfers. Item number six, transfer of unexpended appropriations and or excess revenue to capital reserve. Under item number seven, transfer of unexpended appropriation and or excess revenue to maintenance reserve. Under item number eight, transfer of unexpended appropriations and or excess revenue to emergency reserve. On page three of seven, item number nine, the adoption of the tax levy schedule as listed. Item number ten, the tax payment schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as listed. That continues on to the top of page four of seven. Item number eleven, allocation of the non-technically, technology textbook nursing and security services as listed. Those, actually, the cost will be listed at the grand. Item number ten, twelve, the approval of Victorian agency. Item number thirteen, funding of optimal common unit screen. Discretionary grant for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as listed. Item number fourteen, agreement between St. Clement's Parish and MARS-D for the following school year. Item number fifteen, shared service agreement between MARS-D and New Jersey statewide. And diverse educators. Item number sixteen, acceptance of donation from MARS-D student parents. As listed, acceptance of donation from MASHIO's food services as listed. The agreement between E S C and J, master special intuition and the district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Number nineteen, agreement between St. Joseph's Catholic Church and the district for the following school year. Item number twenty, on page six of seven, approval of the agreement between Lightbridge and the district for the following twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is our preschool program. It is projected to have thirty students. Item number twenty-one, insurance renewal premium rates as listed. Item number twenty-two, routine travel reimbursement for the following, for the following staff members for the remainder of the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And item number thirteen, on page seven of seven, the backfire evacuation, evacuation drills as listed. And item number twenty-four, the busted evacuation drills as listed. Back in this. Thank you. We have a motion of a second. Call motion and questions. I just wanted to say thank you to the student parents, whoever that is. He's not listed at this point, but he's paying off students' naked lunch balance. We know we have, we said we give or another meeting to be a huge check of lunch balance. Over a hundred thousand dollars. So the fact that parents are stepping up for other students to pay some of that off, I think is phenomenal. Also, MASHIO is donating five thousand dollars to the after. This is huge. Thank you. I also wanted to, MASHIO is our service provider, so that was great. So thank you so much to that. And I have a question about number six, seven, and eight. Are we expecting? Expended? Yeah, so that's just wanted to bring that to question. So we don't really have unexpended appropriations for capital reserve and emergency reserves. Everything we have in there, now, and I know that one of the findings that has come to us. How will we get to more on it is that we need to have the floor, especially in our local sort of grade. If anybody has a tree in their backyard, yeah. And our surplus, yeah, as much as we should. But obviously, we're just trying to. Here's Michael's challenge. What we're doing.
Just this for the, you know, for the microphone that while we don't need approval from the town for the tax levy schedule or for either town. We did, the district did share that schedule with both the borough and the town and Dolben agreed on.
Okay, great. So this case just was for the year that we've actually, the district and the town were collaborating to come up with that schedule. Wonder so that we have. It's great. And it works for everybody, isn't it?
Yes.
Any other questions on the agenda? Did I say questions? Oh, we don't need one this time. All right. So we would always. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to a three-minute duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic are cleared. All statements should be directed to the board president and no person may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect, with dignity, and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain about the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their legal advisor.
Hi, Abby Burr. I'm at two ninety-nine. I had a question about the professional development stuff. So I had the opportunity to speak to one of our physical education educators that I'm friendly with. And she expressed to me that maybe, this is like a while ago, I'm actually surprised that I haven't thought about it. But I was told that this person told me that they feel a little bit left out. The elected teachers feel a little bit left out when it comes to professional development because it's really mostly geared towards like classroom teachers. And they sit there like fumbling their hands and it's like a waste of time and a waste of day. And they understand that they have to do it right. They have to do it. But I was just curious if any of these are geared towards their special education, like the other, like the elected, maybe like the computer teacher, I don't know what's, but definitely the teachers and health teachers. And that was my first question. I guess I'll just. The other thing I wanted to talk about was there is a rule at the high school that if you use your cell phone, you get suspended a lot of times. It's like an in-school suspension. This is difficult because I know I had expressed my issues with like lack of vocational training. And when I spoke into a few parents and they asked like, why didn't their kids get in? Because the vocational schools are very open to like, why didn't you get accepted? We found a group of us that a lot of these kids had an extremely high number of in-school suspension marks because of the cell phones. So I understand that the cell phones is a nightmare. It's a nightmare and they cheat and these kids do not know how to put it down because it's like glued to their face. But I just hope that maybe we can rethink a way to try to stop them from using it without them having like a huge amount of suspensions all over their records. Because it really looks like these kids can't like behave. So I mean, that's just a thought, just to bring it out there. Also, I wanted to bring up an issue I had with changing my address. It was like a nightmare. I remember once upon a time, we used to go to central office and change it once. And now you have to change it in every school. So the middle school was great. It took me ten minutes. I had to like send email after email after email to get it done in the high school. And while I didn't really care because I went from Madawan to Madawan, it really was a nightmare trying to get my son transportation. He has to drive to the Falls for like a month. Because I moved in April, April fifteenth, I moved like during, and I was like, great, it'll be during spring break. We'll be able to figure it out. They just started him back on transportation the like last week. And then my middle son, this bus happens to just pass by my house. So they just stopped at the regular stop. So they just happened to edit it. So maybe we could work on that to make it maybe one place centralized. I don't know why it changed. And then I just wanted to say two thumbs up for the CPR classes. I think that's great because my daughter wants to babysit and I won't let her do it unless she knows CPR. And so now she can do it. So that's a really cool addition. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll try to answer this.
So first, professional development for public present teachers. Corrective is a challenge for not only helping present, but a lot of other content areas, grade levels. So our next is District-wide Professional Development Day after opening dates in October. We do have some things planned district-wide where public present teachers, child study team, there's a form yard, so we're going to be doing some things on AI. And there, it's going to be geared towards them. They're going to have that opportunity. We, fingers crossed with our fitness corp studio, that that's going to be a fantastic opportunity to do some professional development specifically for that group. So I can empathize with your friends who's a teacher, that they're correct. That's, that's top of mind. We're always open to ideas for some of those more specific structural areas that we can offer them as a quality opinion. So that, that is top of mind. Mrs. Perez, are we going to go through our other studies? So the cell phone, in terms of students, you have that, there's a code of conduct which is followed by our policy in terms of cell phone usage. We understand that there has to be a learning curve for students and there has to be some balance in terms of personal responsibility. In terms of their own cell phone usage, getting caught using cell phones, that, that's the process. In terms of how do we handle it, it does show in terms of their on the discipline record of cell usage. That, that's been an ongoing issue. It's actually gotten better this year. That's partially due to the board policy about that. Principals are aware, teachers are aware, staff are aware. It's going to be about that. It's going to be forever, but of course, all the cell phones are out. And I would anticipate in the next couple of meetings, we're going to have, we're going to be hearing about the waiting till eight initiative again. So it all ties together. Change of address deals with registration. So in the past, we did have a central registrar that has, we do install a central registration process for our younger grades when you get to the older grades. It is building based. That one just comes down to the staffing and headwork. For those people, we're sorry, that was a frustrating process. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be so. But that's important feedback that I can share with the administrator who receives registrations on. Take that to them and you're welcome for CPR. That's important, especially if you want to be a certified babysitter.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Leibman. One thing that I would like to add just on cell phone policy. I know that this has been communicated, but I think it's important to really communicate that maybe it's worth it to get a social suspension. You know, some of the teenagers will just shrug it off and deal with punishment. But maybe just as we go into next year, really creating the ramifications of things like that. Like, I mean, that's really a shame that because of that, that kept some of the students out. And you don't want them to lose that opportunity. So just really communicating that upfront, like this is where it comes into play. You might not make it into a vocational school or one of the county, you know, high tech high or any of those. It affects a lot of things. So just being aware of its consequences and impacts. So I know it's really harsh and I feel bad because it's not like we're caught fighting or anything else. But we're really trying to crack down because it's not, it's not good. It's not doing what you could if they can for six hours control themselves. It's going to go a long way. So that's, that's, that was the goal of the board policy on that. But I appreciate it and I, you know, I feel bad.
Ms. Leibman, I just wanted to comment. Thank you also, Ms. Burr. But I did notice, and we knew this when we rolled out, or not rolled out, but we had the phone policy last year. And we rolled out the new policy. We knew it was going to take some time. But I, I have noticed like over the last year and a half, it was, you know, applied every month. So I do notice it's going to get better and I feel like the class that is leaving versus now the newbies coming in, they're not going to, they just know better. So I think it will start to, you know, we'll see some more change. So thank you to the principals for having to hear all that. I know it's a lot of people.
Thank you. Listen, I want to say thank you for all you're doing. This is really amazing. My name's Mike Vickler. I'm in Aberdeen. I'm a high school teacher, educator. And I'm just here to just make a little elevator pitch and ask questions. So that's considering the time that I've been suffering since four thirty a.m. And I'll get up before thirty a.m. again. My daughters are in Mams and I got news about the cut. You mentioned it to the honors program. And I know that being an educator, I know that there's always budgetary constraints, et cetera. And, but I don't think this would be a good area to make a budget cut here. And for a few reasons, the main reason being it's the old goose of education, right? Academic excellence. And I think that if we make cuts there as opposed to other areas, then it really does end up being a long-term detriment. And I would just say that I was curious whether anybody else felt the same way. And so I put out a petition and within just a few days, a hundred and twenty-seven families signed it. So I think a lot of people feel the same way. Secondly, the reduction, I think it's problematic because it really doesn't make for like qualitative benefit. And the reason why I say that is it's, I could use analogy here. If you reduce the number of students by fifty percent or whatever percentage, it doesn't make it better. It'd be like reducing the board by half. Would it be a better board? Anyway, but what I think is the problem here is that by reducing it and saying there could be opportunities to get back into the program if you're not in it anymore, you're really pitting one student against another. And by that, I mean, the only way to get back into honors if you're put out of it is by getting another student out of it to take their spot. And that doesn't create a, it doesn't create a set of circumstances psychologically that build up every student where we're all rising together. And then lastly, I would just say that I think that, what was my last point? My last point was that I think that we as individuals here, it's the board of education. We know you don't want to get into the micromanaging of principals and their decisions. I understand that, I'm in education, so I understand that. But I do think this is a little bit bigger than the minutia of what a principal is all about. And the reason why I say that is because it's about the vision of the school system. And I have nothing but good things to say about Madawan Aberdeen School System. My daughters are doing higher level work very often than high school students that I teach are doing. So I give up the good word, but keep the vision. I really think that honors education is a very important part of that vision. Thank you for all your notes. Sorry, Sophie.
Thank you very much. Before I let Ms. Leibman answer that, I just wanted to say that it's, the word cut is really disinformation. It wasn't due to a budget consideration. Actually, to your point, it was to really make the academic piece a rigorously so that.
that the students that are selected are maintaining the rigor. But I'll let Ms. Leibman, I'm not in education, so I will let Ms. Leibman answer that.
It's, trust me, it's really not, it's not a question, it's the, I don't want to, I don't believe in the point, it's just now.
This is early question, pardon.
I'll speak to it briefly. So, I just want to echo the comment that not a budget cut, has absolutely no budget cuts at all. The initial look at honors programs for next year was, how do we make sure that we have the right students achieving at the right level? So, we, we always look at multiple measures of data, that's internal test scores, state test scores, market period averages, we look at those students, and we want to make sure that they're placed in the right spot. We took, after some reflections, feedback, talking with administration, from our team, the right move, which leads along to our strategic plan, which is to offer challenging opportunities for, for kids, so that that's what we're doing. Those students, we bump them out of position, so if a student is in honors program, because they got that letter last bump, and we're offering more opportunities for more kids, they'll be bumped out of it, that's not, not the case, so I don't want anybody to think that we're swapping kids, who exceeds that, that's not the case, so definitely not budget, they'll bump in, we try to create opportunities, right opportunities for kids, and I will say this, that it's important to know that we have groups of students who do accelerate to those challenges naturally, and we want to give them opportunities to excel as well, which are the reasons that we're adding the enrichment course to the middle school next year, and then, and I said this to parents often, if you're looking for ways to accelerate in honors programs, middle school, you're stringent, there's only limited opportunities for those opportunities, but when you get to the high school, you've created pathways for kids, based on your interests, your passions to accelerate in honors courses, in AP courses, almost to mature with buyer, their levels of interest, how to challenge themselves, and there's opportunities in the high school, just because the high school allows itself to propose good opportunities. So, to do that, clarify that a little bit.
Mr. Vickler will let you speak again, as long as there's no other comment.
Is that right?
Oh, and Ms. Gough has a question.
And I was just wondering, I know in the school which I teach, you hear about opportunities for parents really feel like their kids want to be in that course and can't handle the rigor, and some of the criteria doesn't fit, there's a system for the parents to sign off, that they understand they're taking risk, and students' grades may do what they do as a result, but they're willing to take on that responsibility, and understand that. I don't know, is that a part of our district, does it function?
At the high school it is, at the middle school it's not, and it's an opportunity at the high school, because we have so many offerings that we can do that. At the middle school, you really have just a couple of places to base it, and that's much more difficult to do at a middle school, but we tried it in the past, it was best in the system that we've got. But high school, absolutely yes.
I would just, it may be a matter of semantics, but if someone's in the program, and they're no longer welcome in the program by a set of metrics, then that will be bumped, right? Cut, whatever, re-appropriated, whatever word you want to use in semantics, but there are students who are in the program now, who are being asked to leave the program, so I think, I think I would put that in the category of cut.
And that's true to our interest.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, you have mentioned your comments were that there was a limited number of spots, so you said students against each other competing for the same spot. I think Ms. Leibman's point was that's not the case, if, if the criteria is bent, the criteria is bent.
Retroactively, retroactively, the criteria was me, and so what happened was, after the fact, after the children who were in the program, a set of metrics were determined to see who would still be welcome in the program. So, imagine if I gave this here to the board, I say, okay, I'm just going to make, we have to cut the amount of seats here by 50%, so we'll, we'll, we'll do it by how many years of tenure you have, or how many, whether you're an educator or not, and then we'll make the decision. That would be kind of arbitrary for me to make that decision based on that, but whatever the case may be, I would be making cuts based on whatever my set of metrics are that just came into play right now. So, that's what's happening to the students right now. There were, I don't know the exact number, 100 students, and it's being brought down to 50, more or less, you could, you could say the numbers, but, all right, I'm going to believe your point, it's 9:54. Thank you, I just wanted to make a conclusion. And thanks for all you're doing.
And I appreciate that you're being respectful of our time, but when someone, when someone's speaking, we just want to clarify, and especially since we're recording, so that, because someone in here is speaking on behalf of maybe some other parents, because I heard you say a petition, right? So, in terms of the revisions, and why we sent out a letter to parents' community, was because it's input from you, and also from, from staff working with administration, that we revisited, and that there will be changes that will be made, adjustments which will be put in next year, I mean, next week I should say, particularly to the projected seventh and eighth graders, right? So, then, and then looking at sixth graders, then criteria will be used for incoming sixth graders. So, that's for short, okay? So, then, in terms of the students that are, that were in the honors program, we recognize the fact that we had deep conversations in terms of the material, whether they were willing to be repeated in curriculum, and material being taught from this past year, and how, what that would look like last year, so that's what kind of brought us to making the adjustments necessary for particular students that may be in.
And just, just as a thought, if there's any parents, we always say this, that have any questions, comments, concerns, please reach out to the building principal and speak. Obviously, things need to be handled privately, it's about a child, and just to have a sit down with the administration, because they're, they're welcome to do that, just because, you know, a lot of things go on social media, but we can't discuss that stuff there, so feel free to contact the principal if there's any issues. Thank you.
There's a lot, and there's a lot of misinformation too. I know on particular threads of that petition, it got political, talking about budget cuts and elections and all that stuff. Everybody here would be happy to speak to you, I mean, I, I understand, I'm just saying, it's not a great way to get information, so, and I know the petition was to get attention, but I would just suggest, it worked, I would just suggest that, you know, everybody feel free to reach out to the building principal, and then they can address it as appropriate. So, thanks for coming and staying. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we will take a vote on the agenda items for action. Ms. Gough?
Yes.
Ms. Gough?
Yes.
Ms. Gough?
Yes.
Ms. Leibman?
Yes.
Yes. Any new or unfinished business? Ms. Burr, any?
I just wanted to say that, so I attended both the senior recognition night, as well as the honors society induction this past weekend. They were both great, it was great to see our students highlighted and celebrated, and there were so many kids inducted, which I thought was phenomenal, into the various honors societies, math, science, English, and oral language, so that was really nice to see. And then the senior recognition night, which was, there were so many generous scholarships that were given out to students, I think the amount in total was 98,000 dollars the other night, so that was phenomenal, and really fantastic, and I know all the students were young, so thank you.
Yes, I would like to give that, especially since this is being recorded, to just thank the community, because as we stated, all that money came from our community, and being a parent of a child benefited from that. I just want to say thank you for taking care of our friends, and our colleagues, people that just midway through preschool, our kinder, it's just so generous that know that our community stands behind our kids, and hereafter, they're always giving support for the college, so just calling you, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gough. Yeah, Ms. Gough and the schoolies' children received scholarships, so we're really proud of them, and there were a lot of folks who came, are alumni of this district, and are donating back to the district to the scholarships, so that is really nice to see. I always say there's something in the water, because everybody comes back, so we have a lot of teachers that, that through this district, so it's, it's really cool to see. Anything else? Okay. Ms. Gough? Thank you. Be resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel matters, and full advice. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public by the reasons of confidence or other side. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of executive session is expected to be 30 minutes, after completion, public media and board shall be included in this business. No action will take place, and I have a motion and a second. All motion and second. Thank you.